Hate it when that happens.
I know. Well, if I was home, I would have two of you stuck up my nose.
Don't blame you.
Everyone's always like, you know, you have something in your nose? Yes, my tissues.
No, I have a box by our chairs. And because we have a table in the middle.
Hmm.
I have one in each bathroom.
Oh, yeah.
The wor- the worst thing is the car max. That's like everywhere.
Hello? Lauren, they heard you got here as fast as you could.
Great.
It's only a couple minutes.
Yeah, I'm good. Awesome. Very. Let's go.
Okay, so we decided to shake it down and start with salaries and benefits this year. On just get the hard part out of the way. And in your new spreadsheet that you have, it says scenario step increase in COLA on the top. The box that's outlined, those are your changes. So we have new stipends. Um, we talked about it and we're looking at putting the planning board and the appeals board to stipends. That way, they don't go over like they did last year. We know what the budget's going to be. And it seems to fall in line much better with what some of the other boards are doing. Um, so new stipends, that's what that is. And then a step increase. So basically what I did was I took our step chart. I took what they were, step they were on last year. I took what step they would go to and figured out the difference in between there. And then we have contractual items in the third column. And then we have minimum wage because minimum wage this year is going up on January 1st, 3.5% um, to 1465, I believe. 15, yeah, 1465. I'm looking at another 3.5 increase for next January. Um, that's just an estimate to 1516. And minimum wage went up 3.5%. So I figured COLA as 3.5%. And then we have the new items in the left-hand corner. Um, some of the new items that we're looking for is a interim CEO. So when the CEO is on vacation, we have some money to pay whoever fills in. Um, the other thing is compensated absences. And what that is, is when somebody accumulates time and they retire, we have to pay it out. And we're anticipating that happening probably next year. So I put in a $6,000 levy for that. Couple of things as we go through this process. Two of our neighbors, Alfred and Dayton, are looking for a key player um, due to retirements coming up. And so as we talked about last year, retention and recruitment. And let's just be nice about everything and not make people feel bad about what they're doing because there are jobs out there. Um, I got something that crossed my desk the other day for a financial director with a $2,000 sign-on bonus. I've never seen that in my lifetime unless it was a headhunted position. Um, so things are happening out there and we've got a really good group here. So I just want to keep that in mind as we move through it. I know it's tough. I know it's hard. Um, but if we could just keep those things in mind, that'd be great. One of the new positions we're looking at is what we talked to you about last time. It would be the um, rec department's grounds personnel director. And we brought that in at 68,000. And Lindsay can speak a little more to what she's thinking that position is going to look like.
Um, so I gave you guys a spreadsheet that looks a little bit like this. Um, to kind of give you some scenarios on what it would look like versus what status quo is right now. So scenario one is there's no YMCA contract or no money going into there. Um, and then there's no full-time personnel. And scenario two is having YMCA, we talked about being net zero and then adding a full-time personnel. And scenario three is if hypothetically, if you guys decided to negotiate some sort of financial um, negotiations with YMCA plus a full-time person. And it kind of just shows you um, what those expenses look like. And then there's the revenues collected. So I've been trying to gather data for the Bumminget Park um, with what YMCA has given us. And the data is really variable, so it's very hard to know what the actual potential there is. Um, you know, I spoke about the last meeting, um, the pines rentals. It looks like they rented it 12 times. So that's about one time per week for throughout the season. Um, but maybe there's more potential there if, uh, you know, we kind of drive it. So it's, it's really hard to say what we'd bring in initially. Um, but I would definitely hope that we could build on it and grow and let that, let that succeed. Um, I added in their election clerks because in doing the budget with um, Jeanette, we brought that budget down quite a bit, about 45,000 to 5,000, I think it was. And then there's other options like the parks and rec stipends. So have, we have a full-time person. I don't see those responsibilities having to be put on parks and recs because we'd have somebody who would be managing some of those things that Holly manages. And then you guys have talked about reducing your stipends as well. So I just threw those scenarios in there. And I'm open to any of your thoughts or discussions on that.
On any of it?
We haven't heard back on the why at this point.
They're reviewing it right now, yeah.
Okay. But not even like we didn't get any like touch check reaction or anything like that?
No, the only thing they said was uh, they'd be reviewing it.
Okay. I'm just trying to follow the spreadsheet. So this is really just a clarification question. So on Lindsay, on your spreadsheet, you have scenario one is um, no YMCA, no personnel. So basically we're paying to mow it and that's about it?
Right, it's the hypothetical of, you know, let's say YMCA is just like, heck no, you know, forget it. Um, and then we decided not to hire anybody. What would that look like?
Right.
And um, that's financially what it would be.
Right, and so then this, I just, sorry, I just want to get this out of my brain. So then scenario two is YMCA is going to do the camp there. They're going to operate net zero. And then we bring on the one new full-time.
Right.
That parks and rec or facility and rec position, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. And so that on here, I think is 62 and on the spreadsheet it's 68?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. So I mean, it can vary. I think.
Yeah, I'm all, I'm okay. I'm not, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that those are one and the same for conversation. That's all.
Yes, yes.
You don't start at the top either?
Yeah, I mean, it all depends on interviewing process as well and depending on what we get. I mean, I usually try to negotiate, but like Jeanette always says, you kind of plan for the worst, hope for the best.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at it right.
And also, these aren't exact numbers. I rounded a lot of these because I was just, again, I was running into some variables with the revenues.
No, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure I understand it, that's all. And then scenario three is essentially paying the YMCA exactly what we're paying them today. And then the one personnel.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just gives you an idea.
Yep, and that's, I just wanted to make sure I had the right idea.
I guess on this, on the revenue part of this spreadsheet, I, I don't really understand why uh, election clerk select board stipend and P and R stipend is in that as revenue.
Um, okay, we wouldn't, maybe revenue's not the right term. Again, I just kind of like slapped this together. But um, the election clerk, so that salary is going to reduce in the salaries budget we're looking at right now. Um, and then hypothetically, you know, unless you guys want to pay parks and recs the stipend, you can. But I just feel like if they're not going to be burdened with the additional responsibility, we would not need to pay them that. And then the select board stipend, that's totally up to you guys. So if you wanted.
We did lower it last year.
Yeah, if you wanted to keep it, you would just subtract that 25,000. And that would increase your, so scenario two increases your salaries budget by about 41,400. If I have that correct, so then just add 25,000 to that. When you put 25,000 for select board stipends, you mean like no stipends for select board? Right. And I'm not saying that's what you have to do. This is to give you an idea and to kind of play around with some numbers ideas. Because I know when I initially brought it up to you guys, you know, it's, it's the conversation of how much in the budget. And the reason why I needed um, the facilities maintenance piece of it and added the recreational piece to it was hoping that that person would take on a much higher responsibility of recreational services that we could start tapping into, you know, revenue and help fun, funnel that back into it. So that was my idea of putting that into the budget, but um, you know, lowering the cost a little bit or helping offset the cost. So, you know, don't get hung up on the 25,000 select board stipend. You can keep that as is if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I, again, my questions right now aren't, aren't to um, disagree. It's more understanding of it at this point.
So on the new position, we did look at the step scale. There's a step scale for rec director and a step scale for um, Department of Public Works, you know, which would do that. We came into the middle of it. So we set the step scale up falling into between those two.
I'm just going to throw it there that personally, I think that the, hey, that the select board, I think that should be cut some more.
Yeah, I'm on board with that. I just don't know that zero is the number.
Yes, I, well, I, yeah. Gas, gas to get here.
Nobody.
Higher babysitter.
I don't want to speak for everyone. I don't think that anyone's here for the money specifically, correct.
No, that doesn't hurt.
It doesn't, it.
It really doesn't.
So.
I kind of want to see, starting here, in a way, it's nice and I understand why you would choose that because it's usually difficult. But sometimes it's, it's easier to make some decisions about the budget when you can look at all the pieces that you've already figured out and see, see where you're at.
Well, this one typically tends to be the more controversial one.
I, I agree. I think though that we've made some strides over the past few years as far as job description steps justification as to why we did the HR study. So I think that helps this one. So it's not that what it kind of used to be with that contentiousness about it and.
We know we're on track.
So.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like we are kind of pulling out of where it was before. And now it's like, you know, like that don't go backwards, so.
Right. Well, like I explained last year, you know, it's, it's okay to say, no, you're getting 1%. But what you're really doing is with minimum wage going up, social security going up, and you're saying, I'm not keeping up with that, you end up with this huge gap. And then what happens is you end up having to say, oh my gosh, we need to fix this because we can't bring anybody in the door.
Does this have an, um, the benefit include the uh, the 1% that the state's proposing to take out for?
Half a percent.
To half a percent?
Yeah, so Representative Morris um, from Turner has filed an emergency of legislation to halt that. There's a lot of businesses closing. That was kind of the final straw. And um, I don't know where that's going to end up. So it's a half a percent for the town, a half a percent for the employee. Um, so this, the benefits do include the half a percent based on, based on what I've written here. So any changes you make, it might go up, it might go down depending on what, what you want to do.
I thought we also heard a line, and I don't know if you changed it or renamed it or anything uh, before for the uh, the ex, the time when somebody's covering for somebody else, that that was like an overtime or a.
It's still here. It's under extra time. And it's still, I still have it at $2,500. So if there's a training in the morning and then we're open, say Wednesday's is famous. There's a training at nine o'clock on a Wednesday morning, but we're, they still need to be here till seven. That covers that, that part of it.
Sorry, Jeanette, did you say that the social security is going up?
Yes, it is. 2.5% it went up. And when we sat down, I gave you that list. So minimum wage went 3.5, social security went 2.5. And when we first sat down at the last time, I gave you the list to show how that was working.
The 2.5% not increase in terms of what is withheld?
I'm sorry, what?
The 2.5% increase of what is being withheld?
For, no. No, for social security benefits. So they're increasing what they give you, 2.5%. What's being held hasn't changed.
Right.
Since I was in kindergarten, I think. So. 7.65% if you're an employee. So the town pays 7.65%, the employee pays 7.65%. If you're um, if you're self-employed, you pay the 15%. So the only new thing is we have the main paid family medical leave act, which is the 0.5% at this point. Our insurance rates did go up 9% January 1st for health insurance.
Do you believe it hurt when it's going down?
No, that's kind of where we're at now, which is why Representative Turner has said, wait, people, everything is going up. We need to put this on the back burner for now. And I think we all feel it in our homes and our grocery carts and our, our own insurance rates.
The box underneath, is that from last year?
If you're looking at the main sheet.
Yeah, so like on, on the top of the page three for the select board. So it says chair currently, and then it has the numbers and then the rest currently. But on this sheet, it has a different number.
23515 is what you guys had.
Okay, so the stuff in the box underneath it, that's the, from.
That we haven't figured out yet. That's blank.
So on the bottom of page two, Amber, on the very bottom.
Yeah, so yeah, this is what it is currently.
So what's this?
That's the chairs. The natural.
Okay, so that's last year. This is the current.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I have currently. Sorry about that.
It's all right. I just want to make sure I have them.
We lowered the select board salaries, uh, stipends last year.
Yes.
But it doesn't reflect on page two of 31.
Yeah, that's what Amber was just pointing out. So the ones, the ones on your current sheet, Vicky, this one.
Okay.
The, that's the, these are the actual numbers.
All righty, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. I just made a note.
Just get caught up.
That's fine. Every time, that's what we're here for.
I just feel pretty good because I caught something that Amber caught. Can you tell you how many times we used to be on the budget? That you'd spot something just like that.
I do my best.
I looked at that 10 times and I didn't get it.
That's what I read in my cells. I have to look at the state to see if you have money or whatever. I'm like, I know where all my money is. The state doesn't have any of it. So the state has a couple for the Town of Lyman. I retrieved one of them.
Oh, yeah.
It's like seven bucks, but you know, better for us to get than the state.
Yeah, it's our seven bucks.
And the other one's in the process, so they, they don't release it very fast.
Oh, yeah?
No. I've had that works for like eight months for that $7.
Well, I probably can't afford to get that $7.
That's catchy.
Right?
No, it's fine.
So the total, as you proposed with the extra people and the increases, and that is $1,139,536.61?
Correct. Up from 972,364.
Yep. Even if we put our stipends to zero, it would still be over a million dollars?
No. Oh, it, the difference is 167.
That's what I'm saying. Even if we bring our things to zero, it would come down.
Correct.
Just roughly.
You won't come down.
Round it down 25,000, it's still be over a million, that's all I'm saying.
Correct. But it is a service industry, so.
No, I understand and I'm not, I am not complaining. I.
I know. A lot of people, when I did school districts, a lot of people don't understand that it's a service industry. So big chunk of your budget is going to be that.
Yep. And, and we have increased the number of employees. We've increased the amount of service. We have more people.
Yep.
Uh, we're trying to keep. Something you said, one of our, I think it was our workshop one night, when you were saying, when you worked for the school things, that you guys were on the same team?
Yes.
And all that, well, that really resonated on the inside of me. I thought about that a lot.
Oh, we're glad.
Really thought about that a lot.
Yeah.
I can see where in the past, like I've gotten mad at the schools because they, they get so much of the tax dollars.
Yeah.
And stuff, and instead of, so flipping that around and thinking about it the other way, really.
Yeah.
Just it left a mark, so I'm just going to tell you thanks for that.
You're welcome. Having written many and many and many of those budgets, it's not an easy task.
Can imagine it is, but uh, I'll be going to the, neither, that was, we got the notification in Alfred on the 9th of January. Unless it snows that day, it gets canceled again. And so you, you put that number in about that somebody may retire or they have time off and they leave that.
We have to pay it out.
Is that anything that we're going to have to play catch-up with?
No. No, because of the way we wrote the personnel policy and because we didn't have, um,
Caps.
No. You got salary, personnel, we didn't have that in our policy before. So they weren't collecting that, weren't collecting PTO time. Now we've got it all straightened out and there's so much that you can take on July. on July first from your previous year, and that you earn in increments for your new year. So if we max it, that would be the max that I have in here.
And so we did do that. Right, yeah, we added.
I did, I did put in a comp.
So, but you're rounding it out. Yeah. I'm pretty sure we did that.
Yeah, I put in a compensated absence, which is what we call it, or sickly that term, whatever you want to call it.
Right, I just mean we, we did put a cap to it, like.
Yes, we did.
You usually lose it, kind of, you can't just carry forward.
Yeah, you can carry, yeah.
And when we did the payout option, it was, you know, when you leave with good cause, or something, or on good terms, and there was a, we defined what that would look like. I don't remember exactly how we defined it.
Right, yeah, if it was.
Looking, looking.
In writing, in writing, in coming up with this number, if you were here one to five years, you get a certain percentage. If you were here, you know, two to ten years, or whatever, there was a hierarchy to it.
Yeah, your longevity allowed you to take up to, I think the max was like seventy-five percent.
Yep, that's what it is.
And then we stopped.
So even if they carry over July first, and they accrue, it's still maxed at seventy-five percent? Question, Vicki?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, this is, this really, it looks good to me, but I'm wondering, how, how's your, how's the employee feedback on what we're doing and how, how you guys are doing it, and.
So it's in your packet?
I mean, are they happy?
We sent out, Lindsay did this wonderful questionnaire. She asked, you know, do you feel supported? And, you know, with your budget and with what you need to get your job done? Are you happy with it? What do you need that we're not looking at? And it came back pretty positive. You know, there were some things, well, I could use this, I could use that, but for the overall part, they feel very supported by you guys.
Thanks.
Which I think has changed from past years.
I want them to feel that way.
Yeah. So one night when you haven't saw me, and it's in your packet.
Amber, what were your thoughts on stipends or select board?
I don't know. I really thought, I just thought that would be.
You guys want to mull it over and come back on the thirtieth with some direction that you want us to go in with this?
Well, it is kind of a lot to.
Take in, I know.
To take in, so, you know, we're all, most of us, we're all sitting here looking at it. So if we could have some time to peruse it, we'd be more, more apt to be able to talk definitively about things.
Maybe you'll come up with some ideas that we haven't thought of. And we're available, so if you have, if you see something, and you're not sure, and you have a question to help get things started, please give us a shout. Dave, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, hi.
Oh, hi, Dave.
Hi, all.
Do you have any thoughts, Dave, that you wanted to share?
Um, no, I'm just muddling through it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Feel free to shout, I don't want to forget that you're over there.
Like, do I even want to open this to you?
Oh, we can have other sections we can move on to, too, so.
Okay.
Could cover some things that, I don't know, maybe aren't going to change, or.
Well, there's a lot, I handed out on the sheet as to where we are, so there's a lot of, there's a lot that are done. So we'll table till the thirtieth?
Yes. Now, the other night, we talked about the trio and the town cloud, and.
Yep.
The deposit on the town cloud.
Yep.
Has any, have you been able to look at any of that? And I know it's been just a few days.
Yeah, it's been just a few days. It's getting underway. I've spoken to a few, few people from there. They're getting us up and running and getting us into that area where we're gonna, you know, where we can transition. But it has only been a very short time.
Because right now, this is budget season.
I know.
We're probably, we don't know if we're gonna, if it's gonna work out, if we're gonna keep it or not.
We should, we should know very shortly.
In the budget cycle?
In, I would say March first, March, middle of March.
You can, well, my, my reason behind it is that if we did end up having to stay where, where we're at, we'd have to go in at the higher number.
Oh, I totally agree. So on here, that's what I put, trio versus town, town cloud. Um, so we, I'm not ready to do that piece of it, only for that reason.
Right.
Um, because I want some time to take a look at it, to dig into it deep, to have everybody else take a look at it. We do have a demonstration coming up where we're gonna bring in everyone else on, to take a look, code assessing, all of that, to take a look at that. When do we schedule? Seven. Yeah. Everybody else. Somebody was out this day, somebody was out that day, it's holiday time. So that was the earliest I could get that scheduled. So our favorite one, contingency, if you guys are want, ready to move on.
What is elections done?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Elections.
Sorry, I'm like, I'm going in order.
There we go.
Need to have some rhyme or reason to this.
Okay, page ten. So Sue Lindsay and I sat down on, we're not in a presidential, which I think went very well, and I believe we're going to even still save some money from the assessments of that. So we sat down and we said, okay, we need this, we need this, but we don't really need this. And it's down by four thousand dollars. One thing I would, would like, if you guys don't mind, is that when we send budgets to the budget committee, that it be your final, you know, your final thoughts on it. So it just makes it easier for them to review what your, your final piece of it is. See?
I'll watch out for you guys.
So in this twenty-five budget, the U-Haul, one hundred and fifty dollars times four elections? And then we have changing the venues, Dave Riley, bring voting equipment back and forth for elections? It looks like to me, and maybe I should bring a ruler so I can move across the line, but it looks like that is at zero.
So we cut the U-Haul. That's at zero.
Okay, that's just the U-Haul, it's not Dave.
Right, so.
What was happening was Dave was driving the U-Hauls. We were renting the U-Haul and paying Dave to drive it.
Yeah, so.
So instead of just, Dave will happily use his own truck instead of us renting, and it's worked out.
Okay.
So Dave would pick up the U-Haul, bring it here, fill it up with stuff we don't need, put what, the election stuff in here, it would sit out in the parking lot with rental for a couple of days, with stuff that we don't need for the election, and then he would switch it all back and bring the U-Haul. Now we have the storage unit, so he just goes and gets, brings whatever we don't need here to the storage unit, brings back the election stuff.
Good, cool.
Or back and forth to the school.
Yeah, or back and forth to the school wherever we're having it.
Yeah, I forgot about.
Parking attendants.
Well, we don't, we haven't needed those. I don't think we've had parking attendants since I've been here. I know you did at one point, but.
Yep. It is.
Are you seeing? Oh, yeah, that was in last year's budget.
Okay, so the bottom is last year's budget.
Well, the bottom is the current year's budget.
FY twenty-five, okay.
Yes. And then the darker section is twenty-six. That was one thing everybody asked me to do, was so you guys could compare.
Yep. No, I like having it there, I just have to always refresh my brain on what comes.
So we got rid of the U-Haul, we increased Dave going back and forth, and we have, we have to have the sheriff if we use the school.
I think it looks good.
I'm on board with this.
I don't see anything that I would question or change.
Can we just vote, though, in our last, one of our last warrants for the sheriff? Didn't we pay for that?
Yes.
It's on, it was, yeah, but that's fourteen hundred, and I thought we, it was like, it was over a thousand that we.
So you need the sheriff or a sheriff deputy whenever you use a school, so that includes your open town meeting, when we have the town meeting. So they're only there for maybe an hour or two, we pay them for that.
Okay, so that's where.
And then if we do have any random election town meeting in between that, which, you know, we kind of have to assume it could possibly happen, we don't know.
Okay, so it's an hourly that we're paying them, and it's not for like the whole day?
Right.
So it's like they would.
Right.
Okay, so that makes.
So whatever ends up, having been on the other side of that, whatever ends up on payroll for the police department, for the time that they spent doing that, then you turn around and bill the school, I mean, bill that town for that.
Okay.
Yeah, they actually put it out to their deputies to see if anyone will pick it up.
I was just concerned that if we had them twice, and it was like twelve hundred or whatever.
Well, yeah, the election day that we had, that's probably gonna be your longest day, is that second Tuesday in November, or first Tuesday in November. Wherever we are today.
I'm good with elections.
Same.
Yep.
So you want to move that forward to the budget committee?
Yes, please.
Okay.
We accomplished something here.
All right.
Still pretty pleased that we're talking about this stuff, and it's only December.
Insurance, workers' comp gets finalized somewhere around the end of January, beginning of February. So I wasn't ready to figure that in, because I don't know what those first six months are gonna look like.
Good.
Everything else I've got in there. Your favorite contingency?
I'm on board with the twenty-five hundred. I think it's necessary, because we never know what could possibly happen. Personally, in my own thing, I think it's not enough, but I also know it's a matter of contention at annual town meetings sometimes. I think we've done a good job maintaining and managing that over the past few years. I think that shows with zero dollars spent. So we did have, was it salt shed door?
That's what it was.
So.
Okay.
We kind of stuck it in a different spot for right now, like, sometimes we don't know how much salt we're gonna use. So if we don't end up using as much salt as we think, or buying as much salt as we need, we may just be able to pay for that door out of that.
Out of the salt shed money, yeah.
So as we get closer to the end of the year, Jeanette and I were thinking, if we went, you know, over on salt, or we had to buy whatever we voted for salt, then that door is probably gonna have to come out of contention. So there may be a potential, we use it once.
That, to me, is what it's there for.
Exactly, yeah. And I don't remember what the cost of that came to.
Fourteen hundred, I think?
Okay. And it was probably like a spring that broke on the door.
Yeah.
But if need be, like, couldn't that come out of capital improvement?
Yeah, this town can't.
Well, it's not really improving, it's fixing.
So. I just feel, yeah, again, it's a, it's just, I guess, a difference of opinion. I just think that stuff that comes out of capital improvement should be a plan. Yeah. And there should be a document of just like everything under the sun that you would do if you got a million dollars tomorrow, so that then you prioritize it, and then if something comes up and you have to use that bucket of money.
Well, we're trying to get there, and hopefully we're, if, you know, if you guys are okay, approve the new person, that's gonna be part of the job, is looking at the buildings and everything to see, okay, what decrepit, what, you know, and then putting a rank to it, this is an emergency, this can wait for a year, this can wait for two years, and coming up with that five-year plan, and even a ten-year plan.
That's what capital improvement is to me. Contingency is, like, for example, at my work, you gotta boil freeze and a flood, and have to pay Ser Pro like twenty grands, so that our rent payment doesn't. So like, those are the things, and I don't know that we're to that scale here, but twenty-five hundred dollars could be nothing, depending on what happens or doesn't happen. Anyway, I guess all that to say, I'm going with twenty-five hundred, because I, I think it would be hard to have that number be any higher, based on my own history with this budget category, so I think it's better than zero.
I would agree. Some of these funds have been used in the past for pressing severe storm damage. Big spec.
Fine with it for now.
My opinion hasn't changed, though, definitely contingency, one iota. We always find money when we absolutely need it, and if we have to go to the people desk, we can do that.
Yeah.
So is that something?
Because nobody has a crystal ball.
So I have two and four. David?
Yeah.
Thoughts?
Yep.
Those are your thoughts?
Yep. Got them. Should we come back to it? So what you present to the budget committee is what you're, what you're situated with?
I mean, what if, what if we all agree now, but then we all change our minds later, and we've already gone to the budget? I mean, that's why we meet again, right, before we vote?
Well, hopefully, it's just to iron out your differences at that point. Um, that's kind of what, in my, in my past, that's what that meeting has been, is sometimes, sometimes the budget committee might be like, I don't know why that's there, you know, and so I'm in about no. And then we sit down, and we're like, okay, they voted this, you guys voted this, and then you talk it out, well, this is why I thought it was a good idea, I have it in here, this is what, and then sometimes they go, oh, oh, okay, that makes sense, or they tell you their opinion, and you go, oh, okay, I get it. So that, basically, that final meeting is, is to iron out your differences.
It works efficiently that way, like where, so if you guys, you know, you wanna table this, you can. But I do think it works a lot more efficiently to say, okay, you know, you've, you've rounded it all out for yourselves and come to your conclusion and then you guys iron out your differences at your joint meeting.
There's no shame in taking two different numbers if we can't.
Right, exactly. Because it is about the voters.
It's their budget.
Yeah. So do you want to mull it over or, what do you, what do you guys want me to do?
We know Dave's a yep-yep.
I'm not, I'm just not ready to commit, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's read, let's come back to it then. Okay. Animal welfare. So we got the numbers for the shelter. It's sixty-six oh seven. They're staying at one forty-six per capita. I lowered the cost for the clinic. We had that one year where we had quite a bit of issues. But so far this year, we haven't had anything. So I think if we go to five hundred, I think that might be a fair, fair idea. Thoughts on that?
That's another one that you.
You just don't know.
Yeah.
Throw something against the law and see if it sticks.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And mileage, I lowered mileage because I looked at the year-to-date for, so far, and we're not getting to the seventeen this year.
Are we getting reports the way we're supposed to?
Yes.
I'm good with the seventy-five, seventy.
Same. The what number?
Eighty-six oh seven.
Yeah.
On, yeah, top of the second page, so sort of fine.
Oh, for the whole category.
Yeah, yeah.
So I take that back. I'm okay with the eighty-six oh seven.
Same.
Yeah. Good, Dave?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Get me on the right page.
We'll move that one on. All right, health, uh, Health and Human Services, there's two sections. There's the general assistance and that's flat funded from last year. Don't know where that's gonna go. Really don't. And I put all of, in the social services, I put everything that has come in and you have copies in your packets. So this is usually where we say, okay, we're gonna do this and not this or.
Can we table, if everyone's okay, can we table this one? Because I just want to look through what's in the packet for those.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
So the only thing that, only one of these that we funded last year was the lifeline.
Correct.
And I think that's historically what we've done too, correct?
Well, when I first came here, you weren't funding anything.
Yeah, we used to go, we, we, we used to do a lot and then there was a lot of discussion about it on the meeting, town meeting floor, and then we stopped.
Yeah, so when I first came here, you weren't doing anything, and then about a year or two into coming here, they responded to like four or five accidents in the town, so people felt like that was a good reason to put them on the list. So that's why they, they've done that in the past few years.
Right.
Oh, I don't know if you've done that.
It had to be, I thought it had to be a written request.
There, a written request, yeah. The written requests are in your packets. There's not one town I've been in where they would come in and make a personal appeal. If that's something you want them to do, I'm sure they'd be happy to do it, but it's entirely up to you.
I think I just remember somebody saying that it was cut because people requested money and we budgeted it, but then it was like pulling teeth to actually give them the money because nobody would respond to anything like.
Give you an invoice, right, yeah.
Yeah, anything like that.
And that's typical, I've found that. A cou- couple of towns I was in, we had people who would ask for money, but you couldn't get them to come and help even though you gave them money, so they decided to take them off the list. It's just one of those things.
Along with the information that you put in our packet voted, do you have the numbers for our town?
Oh, usually lifeline, when they send us a letter, they do break down, like how many calls they responded to.
In the letters that they, I know Caring Unlimited said we've helped X amount of live-in residents. So yeah, it's a, it's a good idea to table if you want to read those.
I do want to table it. I want to look at that.
Yeah. And that's both health and human services and social services.
Correct, because they're, they're one war article. So what about the GA section? Is that something you want to mull over or?
No, I thought that one, I thought that looked the same. I mean, you, it's flat funded from last year.
Yeah.
And we stayed within that budget.
So far we have, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Joe, I thought you were gonna say something. Okay. Okay. Roads, that's done. So Tom's plan is to get all of the roads repaved and resurfaced. So he didn't put anything in construction. He just wants to get them repaved, resurfaced, and looking good.
And the reason he explained to us that he wanted to do it that way was so that he doesn't have to do reconstruction down the road because some of them, if you wait a couple of years, like two, three years, that's what you're gonna end up being, you're gonna have to do that. So he's hoping if he does the resurfacing, it'll just prolong the longevity of that road so we don't have to do full reconstruction. And then is the bridge in there?
No, that was down in, I put that in reserves.
Oh, okay.
Because we're gonna ask for reserve money for years, right? Yeah. I put that in reserves.
I just want to make sure I'm reading this right then.
At the very top of page fourteen.
And that's the bottom line, that's what.
Yeah. So it's a hundred and forty-three ninety-two increase.
Everybody uses the roads. We all liked have nice roads.
And so resurfacing every single road is that?
Just the ones that's needed. Just the ones that we have left.
Right.
Because they did a bunch, they did like three or four up here, uh, just off of thirty-five. There's a lost tree lane and, again, to know the roads, it's nice. Lost Tree Lane and, and those three or four in there did.
John Street.
Yeah, John Street, he's gonna do, there's one up here, Jacob. The whole end of it's horrible. Yeah, it's awful. Yeah, that's it.
So this is the list for?
This is the list he wants to do next year.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. Thank you.
Yep. At least this is the plan list. Now, if tar triples in price, obviously we will have to decide which is more important and put those others on the next year.
I'm really hoping that petroleum products continue to go down.
Me too.
That's my plan.
I had to replace my tires. I'm not pretty.
So that's where the majority of the increase comes from?
Mm-hmm.
For the authority.
Well, between, between those three sections, between reconstruction, repairs and maintenance, and resurfacing.
Going up just a hair on culverts and ditching.
Well, that saves your roads because the water don't get.
Oh, yeah. I'm not against it, maintaining what we have. That's really, I mean, that's our responsibility to do so.
The increase is a high, if you look over on the right-hand side, next to the total, that tells you exactly what the increase is. I put the percentages in there, but it's just a percent for the department. So I have to present for the overall budget, so it looks kind of wonky when you're kind of looking at it.
I'm good with this, the way it is, with, with the requests are. It's always a place that we can, if we have to, we have to come back and visit it towards the end when we have all the numbers in front of us, then.
I, I agree with that.
Yeah. Moving on to the budget committee?
Is it possible to say with a caveat of, we'll come back to it?
We need to.
And results is a little.
Yeah.
I think, I think anything can be looked at again.
Well, yeah.
At the end of the day, no, but hope not, in some cases.
And, and, you know, in some cases, if you need to cut it, that would be the, the perfect time. But to present them with your best case, with, because what you really want to do is, is.
I feel like our county budget's gonna go up.
Yes.
We'll know better about the school budget.
I'm sure, well.
And we took a hit on that last year. The county, there's a lot of services and school, educational offerings that they're doing.
Yeah.
So.
I think they went eleven percent last year.
It's just a lot of unknowns so far, it's right now, so.
Well, it's always an unknown, yeah.
Yeah, there is always a degree of it, but right now, I mean, I feel like there's more question marks.
Yeah. Well, that's, the problem with starting so early, is you have all the question marks when that, when you can find.
But some of this stuff is, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't need to go off on a tangent, but we could possibly get some data on what the revenue has been for the past couple of approaches for years? How much has been, has gone in?
Okay. Yes. So you want just two years, or do you want year, two years and year-to-date, or what are you, what are you looking for?
Three years, including present, like this year, to date.
So two full years and, and a year-to-date? Okay.
Thank you.
I can do that. Whatever you guys need to, if you think of something else, just let me know.
Thank you.
So are you moving roads on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So buildings, grounds, care and maintenance. Not a lot has completely changed here for the town hall. I didn't know if you wanted me to put in striping for the parking lot again.
Just got done recently.
Yeah, it got done last year.
So as we move forward with plans for town hall expansion at some point, I don't know what's gonna happen with the parking lot.
It'll change.
So.
Maybe skip a year, see where we are then. That's kind of what I was thinking.
I mean, we skipped multiple, I feel like, before we actually did this.
We did, we did.
I think we're good.
We did.
Holy salt, Batman. There's a lot of salt out there was crushing into the.
Uh, Davey doesn't want us to fall down. He really doesn't. He said, nobody's falling down on his watch.
Yeah, I was out sanding this morning, the parking lot.
Yeah, he was too. I ran into him. So that's really the only thing, other than regular increases. The other thing is bacterial analysis. We increased that to do more testing. We used to do testing twice a year. Now we're gonna do it like once a month, I believe. Other than that, you know, we're into our contracts, year two, three, year three, four. Water potties aren't going up. Davy pretty much stayed the same in most things. The trash removal at Bunginut, sometimes he has to go out there twice a week. So he increased a little bit there.
Is that, that's non-dumpster?
That's the non-dumpster stuff, yeah. The, the ball field side.
Gotcha.
The field side. So that whole entire budget is up twenty-nine thousand.
Do you put the requests in there, like leaves and sticks?
No, we made notes.
I think also.
We were doing that with, uh, the new.
Well, that's a thought. So there's.
Well, I guess, so the gate is never working accurately, so, and we only have a one-year warranty for the Kanyapon gate. So at some point, I don't know if we want to put money aside for maintenance or not. I mean, we, I've been having it under warranty, just maybe they'll work out all the bums and we won't have to worry about it. And then there has been the requests for like, you know, leaves.
Breaking of leaves and stuff, cleaning up.
Sticks to come up out of the parking area and stuff like that.
So do you guys want to put in some cleaning, I was clearing? What, what do you have thoughts on that? Do you want to do the new person and see what, what they come up with, yeah?
Yeah, maybe they come up with like a plan, a maintenance plan.
Different thought.
Seriously, I, I don't want to not take care of it, but I don't want to over do it over there.
I understand.
Well, it's Bunginut too, I mean. So.
At, at one point, we had talked about tick spraying also. Did that get included?
No.
I didn't put that in there.
Okay, I knew that we had talked about it and decided not to do it last year. And then I thought during a conversation, or maybe it was in the survey, that it came up again.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with leaving like the leaves and stuff on that kind of stuff and just figure out if we work out a plan down the road. But my only concern is the gate because I get a lot of phone calls about the gate and it's not working properly.
I was pretty concerned about it when I saw all that large equipment going in and out of there when they were paving nearby. It was, at Kanyapon, there was the big roller, that it was big, the, the big machine that they use as to chop up the asphalt. That, all that stuff was in there and I'm like, I don't know what that pressure pad can take.
Yeah.
That's a lot of weight.
I didn't realize they were doing that.
Are they parking it there?
They were leaving it, yeah, they were putting in and out.
See, that's, that's one of those things that we just don't know.
I actually, I probably should have called you.
Yeah, I'll ask the gate company.
Tom, but not that.
Because it would be good to know if there's a maximum weight limit on those things.
Yeah. And, and who would've thought about it, you know, we never had that before, so.
Yeah, the biggest issue we've had with it is the timer doesn't function, so it's.
Because I've noticed every time I go by, no matter what time it is, it's open.
Yeah.
And that was supposed to be the big, the big reason for having it.
It was the selling point, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they replaced the timer with, under the warranty, and I'm hoping that works. Maybe it will work out all the bugs and stuff, but I just don't know.
Do you, y'all wanna put something in for that?
That's up to you guys. We talked, I mean, that was the conversation too, when we talked about putting the gate in, it was like, how are we gonna maintain it and repair it? You know, it's, it becomes an additional expense, but. But we also shouldn't be in a position this soon to have to be doing that. And it's not, but like, it is what it is, but I just.
Know they had put a similar one in to that Lincoln, Lincoln Motel, that like building. And it's always up to them. I was like, dang.
So do you wanna put some maintenance in there for, for that? That kinda stuff?
I don't want to, but, but I, I would, I would fancy taking some, some of that contingency money and putting it into, into something like that. I mean, if we, if we, in my opinion, as an elected official of the Board of Selectmen, working for the town alignment, we, I think we are required to maintain what the town owns and not let things go into much disrepair.
Well, I think we're.
So.
We're trying to get to that point.
And I understand, and I, I think we've made leaps and strides in that.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it probably would be wisdom, if we're having trouble with it at such a young age, to continue to put money aside to.
I think I agree that we have to take care of and maintain what we own and what we've purchased. I just think we need to, and I know you already are, push back on the company and say.
Yeah, oh, she's silly, like, calling, settling, willing.
Do whatever you have to do, but I just think going into year two, not, probably not even a full year to of, of this being in operation for us, we shouldn't have to be paying like a significant amount. I could see, I could see asking them, hey, what's a general preventative maintenance program look like for this piece of equipment? And I'm saying, oh, yeah, we'll come out once a year and, you know, grease the chain and check this and check that, whatever. I'm, I would be in support of funding something like that, but I just, it shouldn't be malfunctioning the way that it is already. I just, I can't get on board with that. I mean, the problem is, is so much work got put into installing it, so like, even if, you know, sometimes you get, you know, a product that doesn't work, you return it. But, you know, at this point, it's like, we've dug a trench, and we've had electricians out there, and like so much effort has gone in to put it in there, but I can ask them about a general maintenance program.
Kind of the service plan?
Right, yeah, as far as like the, the glitches and the kinks, and I don't know if those things will work itself out. I just hope they give us a gate that works.
Yeah.
And they've been more than, like, every time I contact them, you know, they come right out and everything, and, you know, I wanna just keep using their warranty, and hopefully we'll work out all the kinks.
What kind of a number would you be, we, we don't have, don't know what the number would be.
She's gonna check on it.
I'll ask for the general maintenance. Like, I was thinking outside my head, like a thousand dollars, and that would be a very, very small amount to get started with.
Yeah. So I have miscellaneous repairs, right? I do have gate leaf breaking, natural debris cleanup. I did put, did put that in there.
I thought you didn't.
Well, I said I didn't, and then I did.
Oh.
I don't know, it's getting late.
We could take maybe.
Taking a nap.
Well, we were talking about not doing like the leaf breaking and the sticks.
Yeah.
To see how it works out with like a potential new person. Maybe that money we put in there, we can decrease it a little bit and say that's for the gate, you know, for here, maintenance.
So you're gonna call on?
Yeah.
A maintenance agreement? Okay. So let's see what that looks like.
Today, however, it's amazing what I remember.
Did we add the increase on the plowing for the transfer station that we had added?
That was last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're under, um, warrant, they're under contract.
Yep.
So I think we're in.
I was, I followed my finger the wrong, to the wrong line. I was like, man, this.
So I pulled all the con, they're actually in your folders. Yeah, we're in year two of three at seventy-five hundred.
Cool.
Page seventeen if everybody, if you wanna look at it.
If they're all under contract still, then this be no increase, right? If they increased, it would be already in there.
Yeah, it was in the contracts.
Year, so.
Yep.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with that going forward.
It was in the con, in the bids that you guys received.
Yeah.
Yep. So.
Because that number really is what it is.
Yeah.
There's really nothing to change.
Not really.
Not changing anything. We're on planet on it.
No. So why don't we table this? Lindsay can get that number for the ma, general maintenance for the gate. And you guys can mull it over unless you have some more questions. Okay.
On page eighteen at the top, we're talking about ice rig trash. Was one fifty in this year's budget, but then it's six hundred and it's.
Yeah, because we were just taking a stab at last year's thirty of five. Wait a minute.
I mean, that's a pretty big, I will pull the trash bag.
It should be one fifty.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. Good catch.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just glad I read it correctly for once.
No, that's.
My brain got into your.
More eyes, let me see, yeah. Nope, I will change that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You caught that, and then you're like, right, I mean.
Well, only because I, yeah, kinda see that one.
Nice. No, I'm trying to find something because I feel left out.
Is Bunganut the same thing? Or is that just because we pull it more times then?
Because.
Twice a week, I see it.
Yeah, you're pulling it more. That's the one I was talking about, who's having to go out there more times.
Perfect. I'm just trying to see where the biggest jumps are, that's all. It looks like it's really just in the already contracted plowing of the road, looks like.
I know we picked up, had a, a few items on the side of the road picked up this year. That varies year to year as well, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does. Depends on what people wanna toss over there.
I see that, that gets me heated.
Well, we try to do our best to be open and, and be there for people to be able to do that and not, you know, asking for an exuberant amount of money, just what it's costing you to, to get rid of, so try to keep it the best.
Do you know how much we've spent on that so far this year?
No, I don't.
Sorry.
I don't think we've ever exceeded the number.
Yeah, I'm like, do we need to go up to fifteen hundred? Could we keep that at twelve or go to a thousand?
You could probably do that. Is that a recommendation you wanted me to just put in?
Um, that would be yes, my recommendation.
We can do that. Go on, Vicky. You feel bad?
Good.
I don't know.
Are you gonna keep it at twelve or lower it to a thousand?
I feel like we could lower it.
Lower it to a thousand.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's been an increase. I think I've seen more in the past on the roads than I have recently. So I don't feel like there's an increase. And we did have that big jump during COVID at the transfer station with, with tipping tonnage. On, that has each stayed even pretty much. So I'm thinking maybe they got rid of all their stuff. You leave me like that for.
Have we had a full year of electricity at Kennybunk Pond?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
But you know as well as I do, that place has lit up.
Yes, it is.
Very well, isn't it?
Didn't they turn them on like March or April of last year? Honestly, it was in the spring.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, spring through summer, I can't see through the woods now. I look down there and it's just.
Did, did you change or look at the, the standard offer versus any other offers for electricity?
That one's contracted with Constellation, so we're getting an agreement till twenty November, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so.
At a lower rate.
I'm sure there's a copy of that at YouTube.
No, I actually didn't. I didn't. Do you want a copy?
No, I'm, I'm fine, but as long as we're looking at decent. I always stay with the standard offer because it's the only one that offers for twelve months, not six.
I try to throw in as much as I'm going through mine and putting numbers in as, as much as I can think of, but if I forgot something, more than happy to get it for you.
Because so far, our actual, or our actual twenty-four, six fifty, and we had budgeted two thousand, just for instance, at Kennybunk Pond.
Right, so I think, I, I think, and don't quote me, it was like around March that we turned that on, that we, we got, paid the electrician to do that. So that would be three months worth for last year. Because you're looking at last year's number. And I, I don't think we had it on all year, which is why Amber's asking, have we, have we reached a full year? I wanna say paid the electrician somewhere around March. Could be wrong, but I did make a note. I am gonna take a look at that.
Right behind you again, Amber. So. This is cool, and we're meeting again on the thirtieth. And so, I mean, we can sit here and look at this.
Well, you can take it home and look at it too.
Roughly, or we can take it home and look at it and come back.
Homework, homework.
And actually have something to.
Discuss.
Some meat on.
Yeah.
On the bone, and that, that's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, I agree with that. Apologies to editing on YouTube, watching us.
Great, watching us, yeah.
I know, yeah. No, that's a workshop.
But that, it is what it is, right? It's a lot of information to, to digest and.
I know, in a short period of time.
Well, the first fifteen minutes is me getting my brain back in here, in that spreadsheet, so. It works very well, once I know.
Yes.
Actually, I don't think this is a bad one either.
No, it's not. It's just my, my brain, yeah.
I've done, I've done way, way worse, way worse.
I've heard that before.
Dave, are you okay with that approach?
Yes.
He's sleeping, he's sleeping. Who's he kidding?
No, I'm not. Well, check it out.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
So.
We've got three things done.
I even have a calendar now for twenty-five, so I'm ready, ready to roll.
I just got mine yesterday, little buggers. They only deliver it when they bring me a bill too.
I'm gonna keep it in my bag. That's the master calendar, the one that I take all the information off. It's all over the house, so people know.